I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to this afternoon's meeting. Excuse me. I would like to remind trustees that because we are conducting the meeting virtually, each vote will be a roll call. And remember, we need to state our name first before our vote. Are there any other questions before we get started? Is everybody's technology okay? Or are there any other questions?
Excuse me.
Okay. I'm hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Chair Fleming here.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Vice Chair Milliken here, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Treasurer Davis here.
Secretary DeMarty.
Trustee DeMarty here.
Trustee Hatcher.
Trustee Hatcher here.
Trustee Landau.
Landau here.
Trustee McKnight-Morton.
McKnight-Morton here.
Okay, thank you. First up, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Milliken moves approval.
DeMarty second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Chair Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Treasurer Davis, yes.
Secretary DeMarty.
DeMarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau.
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton.
McKnight-Morton, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is citizen participation. Vanessa, did we receive any public comments?
None before the deadline. And there was one written communications received that I sent out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first up is our special report on the COVID-19 revenue impact. President Blaca, are you ready?
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. On March 11th, the World Health Organization characterized COVID-19 as a pandemic, and it has hit higher education like a tsunami. WCC has detailed disaster planning scenarios aimed to handle tornadoes, hurricanes, fires, active shooters, and college closures due to the spread of contained viruses. But COVID-19 is more like an Australian bushfire with no end in sight. We are doing everything we can to protect the health and safety of our students, faculty, staff, and community to slow the spread of COVID-19. Health officials have predicted a second wave of coronavirus infections when people start congregating, such as in classrooms. Academic leaders are struggling to figure out exactly when our campuses will open. Some have already called off in-person summer classes. Others are floating the idea of an online fall semester. Not every college will adopt the same model, but nearly every college will need to change. WCC has a strong quality online program, and we have been touted as one of the best 50 online colleges in the country. Our online enrollment continues to grow, and the percentage of growth outpaces the growth of traditional face-to-face classrooms. Our faculty are focused on student success and are very well-trained. They complete an online training module annually to continue strengthening their online teaching skill set. And the college is in the process of creating a complete college credit experience online, including lab classes, student and academic services, student engagement activities, and more. And as one of our trustees said in the board's master planning session, our students need to have the same experience online as a traditional face-to-face student has on campus. Our faculty and staff have rallied to help each other and reach out to students with personal phone calls, and professional development opportunities have continued through the Center for Teaching and Learning. We have kept our commitment to our students, and we have transitioned our traditional face-to-face classroom experience into an online virtual classroom experience. And our faculty and students have worked tirelessly to succeed in an environment that's so volatile. Operationally, we have mitigated the possibility of a 2019-20 budget shortfall by implementing hiring freezes, realigning our staffing to the needs of a remote campus operation. Remote campus operation. We've put holes on purchasing and requisitions and other measures. In all of this, we have stayed true to WC's mission and focus on student success. While the college stands strong in its commitment to students, faculty, and staff, we must be re-crediciaries to our stakeholders, the Washtenaw County residents. In doing so, today, we are going to share the negative impact the pandemic has had on the college enrollment trends and preliminary budget implications and scenarios. Following EVP Johnson's presentation, I will share the steps that we will take moving forward and answering any questions the trustees may have. EVP Johnson?
Thank you very much, Rose. Make sure everybody can see the screen here. Very good. Today, we're going to go through an enrollment update for the board, and then we'll walk through what that means for the current year fiscal '20, financial forecast, and then we'll walk through multi-scenarios for the years fiscal '21 through '23. And then lastly, we'll look at expenditures relative to those revenue forecasts, and then we'll summarize for the board. So with that, let's go through it. So this first slide shows for the board trends for both spring, summer, and then fall. If you look at spring, summer, rows 1 through 7, we started tracking shortly after we opened enrollment in about mid-March. And for each of the two semesters, you'll see values for both enrollment and credit hours. And these are percent changes year-over-year at the same point in time relative to the start of the semester. So for instance, for spring, summer, right after we first opened, we were down about 8.5% in credit hours. That quickly grew to 17.18% in credit hours. You will note, and I highlight, the date of April 3rd. Just before April 3rd, the college had made the decision that its spring, summer course offerings would be all online. And up until that point in time, we did have courses up for face-to-face. So just prior to April 3rd, we actually converted all courses that we could from face-to-face to online offers or virtual classroom offerings. And you will note that right after we made that switch, we had a significant drop in enrollment. And that was largely due to the fact that there were a number of lab courses specifically that only could be offered in face-to-face and could not be offered for spring, summer in an online mode. And so we quickly went from about an 18%, 19% credit hour drop for spring, summer to 38%. Now, while this was going on, the college's leadership team and many, many other folks across the campus were working strongly not only to put up courses that were in demand for spring, summer in the alternate mode. And that was tremendous kudos to our faculty, to our distance learning teams and technology teams and student services teams that all supported that. But we put in place a number of strategies to start to meet the students where our students were, both prospective and current students. And so you will see from that 38% decline initially after we converted all online that that quickly dropped. It's down now into the mid-20s percent down in enrollment. While we have made progress, but needless to say, it's significant in nature. We have never, at least in my time here, we have never seen year-over-year enrollment drops of this nature. Maybe I could interrupt. If anybody could mute their mic, I'm hearing a lot of typing in the background. And if you're not talking, if you could mute your mic, I'd much appreciate that. Thank you. So you will see that for spring, summer, we're now in the mid-20s range, and it's holding in that range. So we know this is significant. Secondly, you'll see that for fall, since we opened, we were about 12.5% credit hours, and it quickly grew into the mid-20s percent down year-over-year, and it stayed steady in the mid-20s percent down. So needless to say that from an enrollment perspective, very, very significant declines. The other thing that I'll point out, that it's not just in our continuing students that were seeing that decline. If you look, it's there for new students as well. You know, part of the new student decline is not related to apps. Our apps actually, year-over-year, is within about 5%, 6%. So although apps are down, they're not down 25%. Part of the new student decline is due to the admission process has taken us as a college a little bit of time to get everybody through the acceptance process. And we are quickly getting folks through that process as we speak. So that's kind of the backdrop on the enrollment side. So what does that look like for fiscal '21? Excuse me, fiscal '20. It's a typo on my part there for fiscal '20. So what I offer the board is our forecast that we have for the current year. And the board's heard me speak for a number of months that I believe that the college was well on track to have a surplus for the current year north of $2 million. And you see that in this column here. When the college went into remote operations in mid-March and also when we converted all our courses to online, both for winter, the balance of winter, as well as for spring, summer, the revenue impacts were in a number of areas, not just in enrollment. But you'll see that for enrollment, that we're forecasting to be down about $1,007,000 for the current year. Our current trends say that we're probably going to have a decline somewhere north of 30% or near 30% for spring, summer. We're doing a little bit better than that right now, but we'll see as time marches on. And then secondly, that we certainly have for the winter, that we do have some refunds related to courses that we just had to cancel because we couldn't viably complete those courses in an online mode that were previously face-to-face, largely certain labs. So that's about $1,007,000. Property tax revenue, there's no impact for this current year. About 98% of our property tax revenue has already been collected. And then the balance is really, at this point, just due to delinquencies. And that'll be paid to us by Washtenaw County in June. State aid, you know, the revenue forecast for the state are currently forecasted somewhere between $1 billion and $3 billion. A very recent update of the economy, both nationally and here in the state of Michigan from the U of M economists, are forecasting closer to a $3 billion impact for the current year fiscal '20. That number actually goes up a little bit for fiscal '21 and then comes back down a little bit for fiscal '22. We fully anticipate that there will be an impact to the remaining payments by the state to the college for this current fiscal year. The way the state pays colleges and K through TEL is in a period that starts in October and goes through August. So we still have a number of payments left for the current fiscal year, and we fully anticipate that we will see a reduction. This forecast, as you can see, assumes a 10% reduction, which correlates roughly to the size of the revenue decline that's now being forecasted relative to the total state budget. So about a 10% reduction. And last but not least, all other revenue, our non-credit courses. We had to cancel a number of non-credit courses that we already had scheduled. All conference center events, we had to cancel. The children's center revenue for the balance of this year, just to name a few that will be canceled. So you see that when a college goes into a closure mode, it's not just enrollment, especially when it's related to both the pandemic and then the economy as well. And so pretty significant. So close to $4 million revenue reduction is what we're forecasting for the current year. Now, with that said, as President Blaca had indicated, the college, when we first saw the impacts, both of enrollment and other areas, we took immediate steps for hiring freezes, to really restrict spending for non-personnel costs. And so we anticipate that from our forecast that as a result of those steps that we've taken for this year, that that will save from the pace of spend that we were on prior to the pandemic about $2 million. And that's these lines here, the personnel, the $1,000,000, the $650,000, and the $400,000. And then last but not least, it's kind of buried in this line called transfers, but the fitness center. The fitness center performance, we transfer into the general fund the difference between our revenue and the expenditures for the fitness center. And that revenue, which for this year was a budget of $1,750, was to go to pay for debt service and for deferred maintenance for the current year, and it fully covers that. However, you know, since we're closed for the last half of March and all of April, and most likely for a good part of May, and even when we reopen, who knows what that reopening will look like for the fitness center? It's having a significant impact on revenue net of expenses that we've been able to reduce because of the closure. So that's at least a half a million impact. So the bottom line is that while we had gone into the pandemic with a forecasted surplus of about $2.4 million, we are going to give all that back. $4 million loss in revenue, offset by the immediate cost-reduction initiatives that we put in place, which has brought us back to the good news is that, as President Blaca said, that we think that we will manage to the balance of this fiscal year, June 30th, with close to a balanced budget. And again, these are based on a lot of assessments and estimates that we have in place. So then that brings us to the next years, starting with fiscal '21. And so what I'm going to offer for the board is for each of the next three years, fiscal '21, '22, and '23, a multi-scenario assessment of revenue. And for each of those years, I'll offer for the board kind of the base original budget forecast that we had. And the good news is, going into the pandemic, we were very close to a balanced budget. And we were going to be presenting that budget. And for instance, for fiscal '21, it would have been under the assumption that the college would have $150 million in operating revenue for next year. And so what I've gone through is estimated best-case outcome for next year based on the impact of the pandemic, a mid-case outcome for next year, and then a severe case outcome for next year. And I think it's important, as we go through this for the board, that you look at it in the context of not of any one year, but over a number of years, because these impacts are not going to manifest themselves just for a short period of time. But as you'll see in a moment, we are going to experience these impacts over a long period of time. And so I think it's really important the board to understand that. So with that being said, so you will see, let's just deal with the best-case outcome. And I'll spend a little bit more time going through this first column just to orient the board so you can understand. So for instance, tuition and fees, as you see, in a best-case outcome, I think we're going to have about a $2 million reduction from what we thought we were going to be able to achieve. And that difference is really that even in the original forecast, we were forecasting a 3% decline prior to the pandemic for fall, 1.5% for winter, and about level year-over-year for summer. The best-case outcome right now for us is a 6% decline, a 3% for winter, and then finally back to level for next year. And the thinking goes something like this, is that we know that right now that we stand down for fall about 23%, 24% down. So you might ask, well, how in the heck do you think you're going to get back to 6%? Well, the optimism comes is that during a normal economic recession, that community college enrollment is counter-surgical to those activities. And we certainly saw that back in the last recession in 2008 and '09. And that was about a 15% boost to enrollment during 2008 and '09 relative to where we were prior to going into 2008 and '09. So if you kind of think about the netting of those two factors, we're currently in the mid-to-low 20s, down, offset by a normal boost of enrollment for a community college like ours. When you're in a deep recession, that gets you back to 6%. That's a best-case outcome. That's a best-case outcome for that. And so then let's look at property taxes. So property taxes, it's important for the board to know that property taxes for next year, which start collections in July, we will start to receive that money based upon assessments that were as of 12/31 of last year. 12/31 of last year. So those assessments, which we will get from the county mid-next week, we were assuming a 3% and 3.5% growth rate. That's not going to change. Those assessments in themselves will not change as a result of the pandemic. When I talk about the multi-year impact, keep that thought in mind as we think about fiscal '22 and beyond, because it will have a very significant impact. But for next year, the good news is, it won't. However, there is this activity that goes on for prior-year refunds. And those relate to folks protesting their assessed value, challenging their assessed value, and going and working through the process. And if they prevail, then they get a refund, and therefore, we have to refund money back. I fully anticipate that for next year, as you see for property taxes, working across from worst to mid to severe cases, that that's the area where property tax revenue for us could be impacted. That as we're in the midst of a severe economic recession, that there will be more and more property tax protests that will be going on and therefore be more refunds. So I've given you kind of my best guess with the most severe case mirroring what the worst case that we had back in 2008 and '09, because we did have those similar kind of refund activities back at that time as well. State aid, best-case scenario is it won't be the 10% reduction, which the state most likely is going to be facing and trying to resolve, but they'll be kinder and gentler to community colleges. It'll only pass through a 5% reduction to us on that. And then last but not least, the area of this all-other revenue. And you can see in the best case, it's no impact. But there's three big pieces to it. There's trade partners, there's the conference center, and there's contract training. And the trade partners, remember that this summer's revenue will impact next year's fiscal revenue, because it all happens in July and August. So that's next year's revenue. It feels very close, and it is very close in terms of time, but it's not in terms of fiscal years. So this assumption, best-case, assumes that our trade partners, UA and ironworkers run for this summer. We still don't have final word from that. Ironworkers have indicated that they're going to make their call by May 1st, and the UA probably will be shortly thereafter. So we won't know yet. But in this best-case scenario, I've assumed that they run as normal. For the conference center, the original case, of course, was that our ML renovation project was going to be going on January through June of '21. You now know that we have postponed that project a year. That was one of the first calls that President Blaca made in terms of our cost containment. Let's push that out for one year to give us time to kind of reassess. So we have reopened up, taking bookings, and we're already starting to get bookings. Kudos to Brandon Tucker and his team for that. And so I've assumed some revenue pickup for that. And contract training is the tough one, right? Because in our base case, we had 30% growth year-over-year, building our base case, the original case. And we had a lot of contract prospects well in hand to achieve that growth goal. Needless to say, those are directly tied to organizations that will be directly impacted by the recession. And so in any of these scenarios, it's going to be lower growth. In the best case, I've assumed modest growth. And as you look out across the cases, it's either no growth or negative growth. So that kind of frames the way that I approached these different scenarios. And so I'll take you back up to the top then, if you look. So in the best case, we are down $3 million for next year from our original budget. If you look at the mid-case, based upon the assumptions that you see below, we're down $7 million from the original budget. And in the most severe case, we're down close to $10 million from the original budget. So the college is a complex organization with many, many sources of revenue. And virtually, every one of those sources of revenue is being impacted in some way as a result of this pandemic. And so that gives you a sense of that, what that looks like. If you look at fiscal '22, move on to fiscal '22, it's the same kind of parameters, but with our best judgment as to kind of what those scenarios could be. So for instance, the enrollment, our original case, based on all the strong work that our faculty and staff are doing around enrollment, we were very optimistic that we were on a plan to, in essence, get back to break-even enrollment, not seeing a decline by fiscal '22, even in light of all the external factors prior to the pandemic around demographics and competition and all of those things. In this best-case scenario, there is no doubt that there is going to be at least some residual impact going into fiscal '22. To remind the board that fiscal '22 includes the summer of '21 revenue as well, as well as next fall, a fall of '22. So as you look here, best case, I'm optimistic. We're back to break-even, in essence, by winter and the summer, but that we still have some residual impact for fall. Now, property taxes, we had assumed both for fiscal '22 and then, as we'll see in a minute, in fiscal '23, in the original case, that assessed value growth would hold at about 3%. As you might know, Washtenaw County is one of the top-performing property investment counties in this state in terms of growth, both investments and growth in assessed value. We've been very, very blessed. 4% and 5% growth rates is what we've experienced the last two years. And there was no reason for us to believe, prior to the pandemic, that that was going to go back down to 0% or 1%. Given the number of projects that were on the books in the county that were going to be built, billions and billions of dollars that were going to be built within the county over this next three... uh, over this uh, next three, three to four year period. So it was reasonable for us for us to assume 3% growth. So what I've done in the best case is say, you know what, that's that we'll get out of the pandemic. It, we're going to lose a few projects, assessed values won't grow quite as fast, but we'll still have growth, a much more modest, but still still growth of 1%. And here's what's important for the board to know, even just going from 3% growth to 1% growth, it's if you go back up to line two, it's still 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 means a loss of about 1.2 million dollars going from 3% growth to one, 1% growth there. Um, and so you you can see the the scenarios uh, where for property tax, for instance, then I show show what it would mean if we go to 0% growth and then a minus 1% growth. Um, state aid, uh, I I have assumed by fiscal 21 in this best case that we not only have recovered in in the sense that we filled up the hole that was lost in state revenue by fiscal 22, but there's actually a little bit of growth. Base based upon um, the latest economist report from from U of M that I had that that I referenced a bit ago, uh, they would disagree with that view. They they would say there is still a significant revenue hole in fiscal 22 uh, that the state's going to have to grapple with. But this best case is kind of what the name implies. It's a best case and we figure that out and things return quicker than what otherwise might be the fact suggesting today. But as you see in both the mid case and the severe case, well, I not only get rid of that growth in the mid case, but I also assume in fiscal 22 uh, that it's a minus five, 5%. And then last but not least, down in the all other revenue for the the trade partner, we're we're back up and running and things are going as fine. Uh, the company conference center, however, this is a change uh, because we're we're delaying the ML renovation for one year. Now that January through June of 22 is now the period where the ML building will be shut down. And then our our revenue will will go go down accordingly. And then lastly, for con for contract train training, um, after we had the assumption in the original base case of 30% growth in fiscal 21, that was somewhat tempered in fiscal 22. Uh, and then you you can see best case says that we keep that 10% growth going. But then in the mid and uh, the severe cases, that there is still residual impact in the employer base that the demand for contract training isn't going to be as strong as we had first hoped hoped for. So what does that mean for fiscal 22? Um, there's a com, there there's a compounding impact here. That's that that's going on. Uh, because you had lower enrollment in fiscal 21. Now, when you even apply uh, percentage uh, loss of enrollments, it's on a e- even lower base. So you have come on any impact. So now tuition and fees from the base case is down 2.3 million. We talked about property taxes, state aid down. So now it's close to 5 million. In the best case scenario, we're down $5 million from what our multi-year plan called for. And as you look out uh, in the the mid case, now we're down close to 10 million. And then it's it's closer to 14 million down in the uh, severe case for fiscal 22. And then finally, looking at fiscal 23, uh, you you will see, uh, once, once again, uh, you you can take a look at the the assumptions here. Um, you know, that the profit tax assumption is probably the most important one to look at uh, on this page. I've assumed best case similar to last time. 1% growth in best case, no, no growth in mid case and minus one. Uh, and so you can see that that it's it's north of 5 million now in the best case that that we're down. Uh, and that's grown to a close to 11 million down in the mid case. And now we're close to 17 million down in the worst case uh, scenario. In all those cases, what's important to know is this isn't a mo, a a moment in time problem that we have, but it's a structural set of problems that we have to solve for. So what I offer for the board is is a summary, a a a picture summary of what this might look look like for us. The 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 green bars represent um, a three-year op operating expenditure plan that 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 I would have presented at the A, the April meeting. I actually would have been at the the March meeting when we would have originally presented tuition rates. I would have presented for the board a multi-year plan. And it and it would have looked very close to what the green bars that that we estimated that the budget expenditures for the college uh, we're going to be going from 115 to 118 to 120, 20 million. And the good news is, as you just saw, we had a very solid foundation of revenue to be able to support that prior to the impacts of the pandemic. So now what what you see as um, as the affected uh, in the in the line graphs here, the 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 dash blue line represents the revenue in the best case scenario. So you can see that being down about $3 million, growing close to 5 million, then all all over 5 million from the from the original budget expenditures plan that we had in place. The purple dotted line represents the mid case. And then the black solid line represents the severe case. So it needless to say that that we don't know um, how this is all going to settle. But we are confident that uh, that it's it's probably going to be worse than the the best case scenario. Uh, and we would hope it may not be as bad as even the mid case scenario. But what it shows for the board is that this is a structural set of issues that we need to solve for. Uh, and that it and that it needs to be done in a whole, in a holistic way. So next I'll show the board, this this would have been the uh, the proposed budget that we would have offered for fiscal 21 for the board prior to the pandemic. So that's that 115, 15 million budget for next year. Uh, and about 71, 72% of it's in personnel, about 19% of non-personnel, then you then you can can see the rest here. Um, so the largest share of this, of course, is in per personnel. Uh, but we do have a fair amount in non-personnel as well. So in summary, um, the key takeaways are is that for the fiscal 21 through 23 years, that that we're estimating a decline in revenue for each of those years somewhere between 5 and 10 million. Five and 10 million, somewhere in there. Secondly, uh, that that at our April 28th meeting, when we present tuition rates, we will give you at that time the most likely scenario between the best mid and uh, severe. And it might be a combination, a little bit of all those things, right? As we get better and better information, we'll be able to refine that. But we'll offer for the board, when when we're making a a recommendation on tuition rates, it's important that you have our our best thinking at the time relative to the most likely scenario in revenue for fiscal 21 through 23. So one of the things that we've already done and the things that we are going to do around costs, right? As as President Blanca mentioned, we've we've put in place a hiring freeze. We've really intensified the review of all non-personnel expenditures. We have reduced our part-time staff's gas, gas, gas dollars during these months where we're in remote operations and don't have classes that are on campus. We are taking a very strong look at all non-personnel expenditure budgets for next year. We're currently starting to review personnel budgets for next year of across the board. We're looking at deferring all major projects. We've already talked about a nu, a number of them. We've already started to build plans to reduce the deferred maintenance spending. And as a result, the amount of funding we need to put towards deferred maintenance with a focus on safety and reliability and really put off all the modernization projects that are part of deferred maintenance. And then lastly, we are also looking at that same thing for equipment. We we've had a lot of great plans that we have had in place and will continue to have in place uh, to help to not only to keep things safe and reliable, but modern to to bring them up. And last but not least is that our job uh, as an administration is to present to you, the board, a balanced budget in light of of uh, these revenue trends, a balanced budget at the May meeting. And with that, I'm going to turn turn it back over to President Blanca.
Thank you, Bill. Obviously, these scenarios create a great sense of urgency. And they turn us day to later approach to a today approach. It is imperative for us to act quickly in a planned, calculated, collaborative and deliberate manner to provide effective and efficient student learning opportunities and services in a new way. We're going to engage in crucial conversations with all of our employee groups with a focus on the mission and the vision of the college as we look at enrollment trends, services to our students and community members, operational efficiencies, capital outlay, and deferred maintenance projects. WCC has been fortunate over the years. Not have these difficult conversations, but moving forward, we will because we must. I believe it's possible. It's all possible if we keep our focus on our mission, if we treat each other with respect, and if we collaborate with a win-win attitude. Trustees do not have a choice. The community has entrusted us with the responsibility of delivering quality educational programs and services in a fiduciary manner. And we will and will be partners in doing so. And we'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, President Blanca and VP Johnson. Um, do any board members have any questions to start with or comments?
I have questions.
Go ahead, Ruth.
Um, I have two questions about um, money. Um, what is the percentage decline of non-credit?
We, uh, trustee Hatcher, we we um, had to cancel um, about 30, 30% of our our non-credit revenue for the year.
Okay. And uh, what's the, what's happening with our investments?
Investments, uh, we are, you know, we're right on, we're right on track in terms of the amount that is invested. Uh, it hasn't gone anywhere. Um, as money is maturing, um, the because the Federal Reserve has reduced rates, there's been a corresponding impact on investment income. Um, that's not as not near nearly as significant as these other revenue trends.
Thank you.
Do other trustees? Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Um, there was a piece, I think it was in yesterday's New York Times on the front page about um, what people are forecasting for higher learning, post-secondary, higher learning throughout the country, uh, especially in these uh, four-year universities with much higher tuition rates that we have. And predicting that people with strong online offerings, as we have, um, will fare better than some of the other institutions. I was looking at this potentially as an opportunity for us to, with an investment, and I'm saying a strike quickly investment, to market our online offerings and set a target of trying to increase our online enrollment by 500 to 1,000 new enrollees with what are what, just set a number, but think of think it through and go after some of these people who, as a a lot of these four-year institutions are with residential components with dormitories are even looking at not having their dormitories this fall. So why would, you know, I have friends of mine whose kids are just going have going to places like Boulder, Colorado, or out east, and they're saying, we're going to stay here. Why should I go to Boulder for an online experience? And potentially be have to stay sequestered in a dorm or or separated in a dorm and I can do something locally, live at home and do the online courses here. And I I see a potential tremendous opportunity for us to market our online offerings to people throughout Southeast Michigan and Northern Ohio, um, figuring that many students are going to be looking at alternatives to going to going away to expensive four-year uh, residential institution. And I say we strike, not quickly, take it, take some advantage of this terrible situation and offer an inexpensive or less expensive opportunity to students so they can start or continue their um, post-secondary education at our community college and transfer credits down the road. So I see us as situated in a place that could see significant opportunities for increased enrollment in our online offerings. But we have to market it. We have to look at it strategically and say, let's go after this. And maybe it'll take a little bit of investment and money to to get the uh, personnel onboard to do that. But I I see it as an opportunity that could help fill some of this hole, not all the hole. But uh, if we could fill, you know, if we get 1,000 uh, students paying 1,200 a semester, that right there is a 1.2 million dollars. And that's a significant uh, stretch. And and look back at 2008, our enrollment was significantly higher then because of the recession. Well, we also had that that recessionary aspect, which is going to, people aren't going to be working. They're going to be looking at opportunities to expand their education or to retrain. So that's another factor in our favor to offer um, to increase our online enrollment. So I would say, let's aggressively do that. Let's try to fill part of this hole by assertively going out and bringing more students in.
Chair, can I speak?
Uh, first Rick, then Rose.
Um, yeah, I I admire Dave for his optimism. Um, I I see this an entirely different way. Um, frankly, I think what's going to happen are the four-year colleges such as Michigan. Um, and frankly, even more urgently, the um, uh, the Westerns and Easterns of the world, not to mention the Harvards and the Gales and the Stampers. I think they have the revenue and the ability to scale up their online offerings. Um, because I think everybody is going to recognize that online at this point, this is a trend in higher education that's been going on, obviously, for years. This is going to accelerate it, I think exponentially. And my concern is that um, we're going to be keep be competing against Michigan State, Michigan Eastern. Um, and frankly, you know, since the world is flat in the online environment, every four-year college in the country, um, to the extent they didn't wake up, they're waking up now. And their brand is a whole lot more prominent than our brand is. So um, while I admire the optimism, my concern is that quite frankly, no matter how much we put into marketing, they're going to be four-year colleges that can put, you know, multiples of that into their marketing and have the ability and means to scale up online very, very quickly. So I think Bill's, you know, sort of best case scenario is, you know, very, very optimistic. Um, I hope it turns out to be the case. But my concern again is that the competition for online is just going to be off the charts. And no matter how much we invest, we're going to get out invested by other by other institutions.
Go ahead, Rose.
Well, I, go ahead. If you had trustee Hatcher would like to say something, and I can wait.
No, I have not, no.
Oh, you didn't? Okay. Um, well, I agree with both trustees. Um, for, I'd like you, uh, first of all, we have taken an aggressive marketing approach. We meet every week and are doing exactly what you're saying, uh, trustee DeBarby. In addition, we have already, we're already working, because it was one of our strategic goals, to have that complete college online. And we have so many good things that are already happening, like, and almost out of necessity, things are occurring that people said before we couldn't do, they're doing it now. For example, you know, our student activities with that remote dance, they're happening. I mean, so, I mean, there's so many, you know, yes, yes. And I think we're probably the best community college online. And perhaps we can And perhaps we can get some of the students that might be interested in a less expensive, yet quality way of learning their first two years of college. And so we are going to continue down that path, and we're going to put everything we have in doing that and invest the dollars that we need to do that. We also have the situation with our skilled trades. No one's figured out yet how to teach skilled trades. You know, I asked the International Brotherhood of Ironworkers. I asked them, "Can we borrow? Do you have any curriculum that we can teach welding that we could borrow, maybe, you know, online?" And he said, "No ropes." You know, it'd be like if you were teaching somebody how to cook, you got to have an oven. So I was hoping there might be something. But I know our faculty are really, and I'm not just saying this to blow smoke. I know our faculty are really talented and will figure something out, like either flip classrooms or we'll figure something out. But I also think trustee Landau is right. The giants are in the game now. The giants weren't in the game now. Did you know that U of M wouldn't even accept our online credits? I mean, you know, they were so against online. And now they're offering online. So I, you know, there will be, it's, who knows? It's a big, it's a big if. And while doing, while doing all we can to continue moving forward as determined and yet, you know, really focusing on doing it the right way, you still have to think about this budget impact. And what do you do? And hopefully, it all comes back again. A miracle could happen, and this could just all go away, and we realize that. And when it's done, it'd be great if life comes back to the way it is. But I don't know that it will. And if, you know, but what are we going to do with a campus that no one comes to? I mean, what are we going to do? How will we alleviate the fear of what, you know, students may have? There's so many decisions that we have to make. And the cost, the cost is, you know, where we're going with our budget. We really need to take a look at some of the practices that have bode us well. We really have in the past. But maybe, well, I'm not going to say maybe. There are many that don't anymore. We have known it, but we didn't have to do anything about it. But now we do. And I just want to make sure everyone understands we're going to do this collaboratively. You know, I'm not going to sit down and, or, you know, we're not going to sit down and have a hit list or something. You know, I called Julie before this meeting, Julie Kissel, and said, "Hey, you know, I just got to tell you, this is what's going to be at the meeting. It's what we're going to talk about." And I need, and talked to the other two leaders. I mean, we have to just sit down. But these are not going to be easy conversations. This college has never had to, maybe once, a long time ago, Ruth, right? Many years ago? But it's never had to have this type of a serious conversation. We do now.
Rose, have you guys considered innovating enrollment in ways that we've talked about before? You know, instead of having semesters, maybe you have a rolling enrollment where there's monthly or weekly beginnings of classes?
Yes, we have. As a matter of fact, we have that now. And we can improve that. One of the reasons that, and I sent the board an article today, maybe two, I don't know, from the Chronicle. One happened to do, happened to be on academic schedule. One of the reasons everyone's looking to us and asking us questions about our hidden enrollment, and I will tell you, I talked to the other presidents, and they're not, they don't seem as concerned. This was two weeks ago. And I was thinking, how could they not be concerned? Well, it's because this, we started immediately. They don't start. They haven't started until maybe the latter part of May. They don't even see the implication of their enrollments yet. And the good news about us is about five years ago, or six or seven, we implemented short-term programs. We implemented accelerated programs. And, but, let me just put a big but there, trustee Fleming. We could do more, you know? So we know what works, and we can do more. And again, I'm not blowing smoke. One thing we have is a faculty that I have seen, you know, I've been here, this will be my 10th year. I have seen it go from, "Oh, no, no. This is so traditional. This is how we do things." They're not like that at all anymore. They're not like that at all. So I've seen a faculty that's really interested and will do whatever they can to accommodate this. And we have that Center for Teaching and Learning, which is great because we could teach faculty how to teach in short accelerated months because it's a lot different than just shortening a class. And I want to hear what they have to say. You know, we haven't said much because we didn't, fortunately, to be perfectly honest, we didn't want to create a fear amongst people. We just didn't want to. But I report to you, you're the board. You need to hear, you need to know what we know. And we've been holding back because we wanted to keep people calm. And we hope we can keep people calm through this whole process. But, you know, as soon as they hear things like this, it creates a little anxiety, a lot of anxiety. But this is really where we're at.
Madam Chair, I just want to speak up real quick. I was on a conference call this morning with the Executive Committee for MCCA, and majority of the presidents on this committee expressed concern. And I understand what our president is saying, but now they're talking about concern, except for the ones up north. They don't, because they're in a rural community, and so far, nothing has happened except for one college where only one person has gotten the virus. But in Oakland County, a faculty member died from the virus. Other people have it now. So the other presidents are aware of that now.
Okay. Dr. Blanca, in your intro, you mentioned that we are expecting a second wave of COVID. And in my mind, I'm thinking that we have to kind of plan for that, too, in our three-year planning schedule here. I think we should just plan for that off the bat. But I don't know how without more data. We haven't even gotten to the peak of our own curve yet for this first round. So in terms of gauging if we can open up the campus yet, we still need more data to be able to inform that, you know?
Yes, if I may.
Yeah.
Well, back to what trustee DeBarty said. Yeah, online, we have to, we have to really, you know, work as, you know, conscientiously and as best as possible on our online programming. Because maybe, I don't know, maybe we won't have any face-to-face classes in the fall. Maybe we won't. So if we have a great online program, that will really help us. But then, maybe we will, you know? So if we put all our resources, if we put some of our resources, a lot of them in online, we can't lose. We can't lose by that because so many people want to learn by online. So we really can't lose there. But, you know, I don't know. And maybe trustee DeBarty knows something about that second wave since he knows someone who has great expertise in this.
I'm thinking that as the economy starts opening up and, right, we're going to see, until we have herd mentality or herd immunity or a new, or a something that's
Vaccine.
A vaccine against this. We're, you know, if 3% or 4% of the people have had the virus, that's still, most of the people in our communities are at risk. I'm hearing the NFL is talking about not having football games in the fall. The four-year residential colleges are talking about not opening up their dorms in the fall. So I see a lot of people really planning or thinking that we could start to open up and see a second wave of COVID infections. Maybe not. I would hope not. I would pray not. But it's something that a lot of institutions are planning that they may face. And I'm totally with you. We have to cement and increase our online openings because I think there's a high probability at this point that we will see very reduced on-campus opportunities across the country, not just here.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that you have, as far as I can tell, you have an intelligent, creative faculty. And I think your urge to collaborate with as many groups as you can is a good one. Whether or not they're afraid, they have incredible creative power to solve problems. And if we are honest with them about what the problem is, I think we can come up with reasonable solutions that everyone understands. It's difficult for everyone, and the faculty knows that. So I would encourage a lot of collaborating with all the groups to solicit their creative juices in terms of solving these problems. If the problems are presented in an honest, forthright way, I think both sides can come to some creative solutions. And that's always been the way we've prospered.
I agree. And thank you for that advice. Now that I've shared this with the board, I feel comfortable to have conversations, more in-depth conversations with the employees. I always, I don't ever want you to be caught by surprise. So that's exactly what, you know? And any suggestions any trustee has, please let me know. You know, we're all in this together. We're all, you know, we're all across the board. So, but now I can have these conversations. I couldn't before I talked to you.
Thank you, Dr. Blanca. I certainly appreciate that. And the only word of wisdom I would leave you with on this is, don't be afraid to experiment and innovate. Don't be afraid, don't be afraid to test and try things out because that's how you're going to get to where we need to go. And if you need us to approve budget for it, you know, we, I think, I agree with Dave that this is the time to strike while the iron is hot for the online offerings. I unfortunately don't have any good advice for the skilled trades yet. I've been pondering that myself. That's a tough one. That's a real tough one. Would any other board members like to comment on this special report? Okay. If there's no other comments on the special report, we're going to go on to remarks. Do any board members want to make general remarks?
I'm just wondering when we will find out what the HLC response is?
I'm not sure.
I, you know, we talked about it just the other day, and I can't remember. Do any of the vice presidents remember what Julie said? Is it like, I know the, we're going to get a preliminary report, but it really won't be, it won't be the final report. You have to have another visit because they need to come on ground. So Kim, do you remember what Julie said? Your, wait, your mic's not on. Linda, do you remember?
Yeah, the preliminary report is due on April 20. And then I think we get to kind of, you know, make any kind of corrections. I don't know if that report will actually have any recommendations because they have to submit it to the people in Chicago. But it could be as late as, you know, maybe October or November before we get everything finalized and a final report from HLC.
Good. Thank you.
Did you want to add anything, Kim?
No, I finally figured out how to unmute, but that was it.
Okay. We're also becoming, we're also becoming more, at least me, I'm becoming more proficient working online, so.
No doubt. Any other board comments? Okay. Hearing none. President Blanca, do you have comments for us?
No, I do not.
All right. We're going down to tab A, new business. This tab A is the recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the following resolution. Whereas on April 17, 2020, the Board of Trustees of Washtenaw Community College appoints its negotiation team to negotiate with the Washtenaw Community College Office Professional Technical Association affiliated with MEA-N-E-A. Where's the rest here? Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Washtenaw Community College appoints as its negotiators the following individuals: Katie DeLong, Victor Vega, Sukanya Jett, Kaylee Phelps, Brandon Tucker. Be it further resolved that these individuals be given the necessary power to make proposals, consider proposals, and make concessions in the course of negotiating and bargaining, subject to the final approval of the Board of Trustees. Do, okay, so this is new business. Did you want us to take action on this today?
Yes, if you could, yes, we.
I move that, this proposal.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Trustee DeBarty.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on tab A before we vote?
When does the contract expire?
It expires the end of this academic year. 20, what's this, 2020?
Early May.
June, or, Larry, what is it, August?
End of June.
End of June? Okay, thank you.
I asked a question. I noticed that the HR is not on the negotiating team. Is that because we have the chief negotiator now?
Katie DeLong is in the HR department.
What is it? So Diana, trustee McKnight, what's happened is, rather than replace that position with a vice president, we replaced it with an associate vice president, who's Chris Mahaly. And Chris is responsible for all of HR transactions. Katie DeLong is our, she also works in that area, and she's the executive director of Labor Relations and is responsible for working with the negotiating team. Katie has a very good background. She was the labor attorney for AFSC. And so she has a clear understanding of, you know, what, you know, both sides of the table. So that's how, and Katie DeLong works very closely with both Larry and myself. So now HR reports to me and kind of little Larry because we, that's how we just did it, to save some resources and because we had talent.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Ruth.
Is Christine Mahaly now officially associate vice president and not temporary?
Were you temporary? Yes, she's officially AVB.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Hearing no further questions, Vanessa, please call the roll. Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Treasurer Davis, yes.
Secretary DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
McKnight-Morton, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Next, tab B, revision to our monthly board meeting schedule. I think the primary change there is moving it up to 1:00 PM. So tab B, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees revise their 2020 schedule of the monthly board of meetings and begin the April 28th meeting at 1:00. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
So moved. DeBarty moves this motion.
Milliken.
Give us support.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this move?
Does this mean that subsequent meetings will be at 1:00 until we've changed it, or just this one?
Just this one.
Okay.
Unless the board decides that, it was just that the, this is a long meeting, because it's the one where we decide on tuition and budget. It will have more in-depth, right, budget things built. And so it's a long meeting, and so we thought it would be much better to start it earlier than 6:00. But if the board, you know, moving forward, if we're going to have these types of meetings, the board might find it, you know, more advantageous to, to meet earlier. It doesn't have to be 1:00, but to meet earlier, and meet at 6:00 and end at 9:00, you know, so just a thought.
Sounds good to me.
I'm in favor of meeting a little bit earlier if we're doing the virtual meetings, as long as it works with everybody's schedule. But for today, we're just approving on the April meeting. Okay, if there's no other question, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Treasury Davis, yes.
Secretary DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau? Trustee McKnight-Morton?
McKnight-Morton, yes.
Thank you, everybody. All finally, adjournment of our meeting. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved, I mean, support.
Yeah, you're ready to get off.
I'm ready to get off.
Was that the first and the second with both of you?
Right.
Any, any discussion? Hearing, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Milliken, yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Treasury Davis, yes.
Secretary DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Hatcher, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
McKnight-Morton, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned.